When it tells us, for every beast of the forest is mine, and the cattle upon a thousand hills. I know all the birds of the mountains, and all the wild, the fields are mine. And then again, in Psalm one twenty seven, it tells us, unless the Lord builds the house, they live in vain that build it. Unless the Lord guards the city, watch when the stairs awaken. This evening, our country goes through the health pandemic, going through a health pandemic. You may be afraid, as many of us are facing challenging times. We hope this presentation, financial management in the pandemic, will help you put your trust in God and bring you through. Let us pray. Oh, Lord, Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for this opportunity to come as a believing church of your second coming. Now, we pray that as we go through this presentation, that you will be able to soothe some hearts, some minds. Lord, most of all, we want your name to be praised. Lord, we thank you for the presenter, who wanted to bless her as she gave her presentation. Lord, we pray that someone, all of us would be blessed. We ask his blessing in Jesus' name. Just before we start, I'd just like to go through a few housekeeping matters. First of all, like everyone to mute their mics, so we will not have any background noise. Secondly, as the presentation is going on, those persons who may have questions, I'll ask you to, if you have questions, you can hit on participants and go to Brother Val Valentino Hanna. You can type in your questions. So when the question answer section comes in, you can have the questions, and if you have no breaks, continue to flow. And we give as many persons the opportunity to ask their questions as possible. And third, we would like to ask persons who are assigned in with just this telephone, the telephone that they're using, go in and put their names in, so that there are some prizes and surprises that we would like to share. That while we are so distanced, we don't want to be spiritually distant. So just put your names in, so we can contact you. And even if you'd like us to give you a contact, those persons who may have other questions, they can do so. Right now, I'll just turn it over to Brother Lowell Gibson, as he present, this presenter.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody's safe and sanitized this evening. My task, well, my pleasure, it's my pleasure to present the speaker for tonight. She is a member of the Sanibel Seventh-day Adventist Church. She's a graduate of Loma Linda University in Riverside, California. She earned a bachelor's degree in computing information and information systems. She also holds a Masters of Business Administration and International Business from Emory University in Atlanta, Georgia. She is also a certified public accountant, certified financial analyst, and she has spent a bulk of her career in the field of investment banking. She started out at Smith Barney in Atlanta, Georgia, and then she moved to the Bahamas, where she has worked at Citibank and CIBC First Caribbean. She is currently employed by the Ministry of Finance, and her hobbies include cooking, reading, and gardening. I'd like to present you to the speaker for tonight. Her name is Catherine Gibson. She has one son and one husband, Lowell Gibson, and that's my wife. So without further ado, I introduce you to my beautiful wife, Catherine Gibson.
Okay, thank you very much. Kind words of introduction. And I think I may need a cushion. Okay, good evening, everyone. A pleasure to be here with you. And we'll just take care of that, my apologies. I'm just sharing my screen with you. Okay. Great. Are you seeing the screen? The presentation? Oh, are you seeing the presentation?
Not yet.
No, we're not.
Okay, let's try this again. Are you saying it now?
Yes.
Yes.
You started sharing it, not getting it.
Okay. All right. So this evening, we're going to talk about financial management during the COVID-19 pandemic. Okay. First of all, we'll take a look at what we're facing now. Um, and how financial planning during a pandemic is going to be different from financial planning during normal circumstances. And our position now will be to protect and preserve our income and our health. And of course, some people will say, I have no income. And of course, then that leads to the question of, how do I find a job now? And others will say, well, I have a job. What's next for me? And the answer to that might be time for a side hustle. And we're going to talk about resources that are available for entrepreneurs. And finally, we look at the reopening of the economy and what we're to do next. Um, okay, so what are we facing now? Um, a lot of uncertainty. The shutdown of our economy for an extended period. Unprecedented levels of unemployment. Reduced income. Um, and of course, we have no idea when the recovery, when the recovery will take place. And we're in this position, all with high levels of debt. Sorry, your video is still on. Um, we're in this position with high levels of debt still, and for most people, low savings and investments. So not a good place. But even in the face of that uncertainty, we have a great deal of certainty. And the most important thing is that we have a Savior who loves us so much that He died for us. And we also have those great and promise, great and precious promises that He's given to us, that He'll be with us in this crisis and will see us through. So what we want to do, first of all, is don't panic and control what we can. And that means two things that we can control. And most importantly, our attitude, and then our actions. And our attitude, for us to come through this, should be filled with gratitude. And what I'd recommend is, for most people, at the end of the, at the end of the day, just start a gratitude journal. So at the end of the day, look at two things that you're grateful for and write those down. And as you go to bed, you go to bed with those things on your mind. And then we look at so many things we can control. We can control our actions, the way we respond to those things that are beyond our control. So we're going to talk about some of those actions that we're going to take. So I heard someone said, I wish I could give this person credit for the quote, but I don't remember who it was. Um, we're all in the same storm, but we're not all in the same boat. So circumstances vary. Um, some folks are financially secure. You know, they, at the start of this pandemic, they had their rainy day fund set up, set up, and steady income. And there are others who have steady income, but living paycheck to paycheck. Um, and then again, there are others who have a job, but they have reduced wages. And of course, those that have lost jobs. And then you have the self-employed persons that have a business, but their business has been shut down or operating under a lot of restrictions. So not earning as they normally would. So what we're going to look at tonight is some guiding principles that can be applied no matter what stage of these circumstances that you're at. Okay? And what we have to remember is that it's possible to move between these categories, between financial security and lost job and reduced wages. So um, we need to keep that in mind. So all of the things that I might say tonight may not apply to you, but some of it will likely apply. So take the things that apply to you and file the rest away, because life happens. We don't know when things will change. Okay, so in life, there are guiding principles that that we live by, and we apply those principles to the various circumstances that we face. Financial management, personal financial management is the same. There are certain principles that we're going to be guided by. And if we look at how we would apply those principles before COVID, and then look at after COVID or during COVID, the principles are the same, but our focus will be different. Pre-COVID, we would be looking to build and grow. During COVID, we're looking to protect and preserve. We're going to apply the principles of budgeting, saving, dealing with our debt, and investing. But our focus in applying those principles will be different. Now, I have, um, there are a lot of things on WhatsApp now, not all of it good, but I got something that I thought was pretty good a little while back, and it, in two minutes, shows the principles of of personal financial management. It just sums it up really well in just two minutes, and I want to take a minute to share that with you. So I will stop this document, and I will get the other document. Okay, and let me start from the beginning. Let's try that again. Okay, I think I lost that document. Okay, so we'll go back to the presentation. Okay, so sorry, I couldn't share that with you, but it was a very succinct presentation on what you do during the normal circumstances in managing your finances. And basically, it's budgeting, reducing expenses, saving. Um, and we, I would normally spend a lot of time talking about setting up a rainy day fund um, for circumstances just like this. Um, a lot of focus on paying off debt. Um, but we all want to be debt-free, and then investing, diversifying and thinking long-term, investing based on your own particular circumstances. But during COVID, we're going to budget, and we'll look to reduce expenses and save to the extent we can. We want to hold on to cash. Um, in terms of paying off debt, which is usually a big part of personal financial planning. Um, and normally, that's approached by paying extra, not, not paying just the minimum, but paying extra on whatever debt you have. And once you've paid that, the first one down, you take that amount and apply it to the next one. And once you've paid that down, you take all of that, that you would have been paying on the first and second debt, and you apply it to the third until that's paid down. But we're not going to do that now during COVID, because we want to hold on to cash because of the uncertainty we face. Um, we don't know what's around the corner, how long it'll take the economy to turn around, when we might have a job again, um, or when our income goes back to pre-COVID levels. So in terms of debt now, we're going to make minimum payments, and we're not going to take on any new debt. We're going to avoid the use of credit cards and things like payday loans, which rack up really fast. Um, they are convenient in emergencies, but the cost is usually very high. And you're going to invest during COVID as well. This time, you will be investing in yourself, in your health, and developing skills. Okay? So protect and preserve. First of all, we want to create an emergency budget. This is our COVID budget, and this has to be written down. Even if your income is zero, you have to write zero income and list your expenses. And the starting point for this would be our pre-COVID budget. Now, um, some people may not have had a budget to start with. Well, if that's the case, then try and think back to the couple of months before COVID, and look at what you spent money on, and record those things. So you start with your income. And of course, we're going to remain faithful in returning our tithes and giving offerings, because just like life principles and financial principles, spiritual principles don't change. So we're going to remain faithful to God in returning His tithes and giving an offering. And then we're going to focus on essentials, and that would be food, utilities, transportation, and shelter. Those are the things you need to live. Then we'll look at expenses that protect our assets and preserve our health. So things like home, life, and medical insurance, and diet and lifestyle. And let me just say a word about home insurance. Um, a lot of times, most of the time, people have it because if you have a mortgage, the bank forces you to take out insurance. And in many cases, people are underinsured, and they don't insure contents in their house. And then there are people that are fortunate enough not to have a mortgage on their homes outright. And a lot of times, these folks don't want to be bothered with the expense of um, house insurance, hurricane insurance. But um, we learned a lesson from Hurricane Dorian. That was, and the thinking usually is, well, if something happens to the house, um, maybe some roof damage, some windows, I could repair it. I could get that repaired. But um, after Hurricane Dorian, we saw that entire homes could be lost. And if you own that home outright, the loss is all yours. It'd just be up to you to find someplace to live. The bank's not sharing in it with you. Insurance company isn't, isn't coming with any, like, insurance proceeds. So we want to give careful consideration to that kind of insurance, home insurance. Okay, um, hurricane insurance. So um, our loan payments, we stick with the minimum, and we need to remember that the credit bureau is coming. So there will be a record of how we pay, and that will impact our ability, ability to borrow. So keep that in mind. And then the other thing to keep in mind, banks have made provisions to defer loan payments. In some cases, you have to approach the bank and apply for it, or discuss that with them. It's something that's available. Give it some thought before you take them up on that, because what happens is those payments, payments that you don't pay now, are going to be added on to your loan balance, and you will be paying interest on them, and interest on the interest that you would have paid. Um, and that extends the, the life of your loan. So think about it before you take them up on that, and if you can avoid doing so, do so. Now, remember, we're saving any extra that would have been used to pay off debt. And we, once we've gotten out of this, and there's more certainty about our situation, then, you know, you don't spend that money that you would have been using to pay off debt. You take that, and you pay down the debt. Okay? The next step in looking at this budget is to cut all non-essentials. Um, and then consider what you should add back. So you really need cable. Do you have the right phone plan? Do you need Netflix, gym membership? All those things, think carefully before committing to them again. And of course, with any budget, we have to record our expenses and track how we're doing. Okay? Now, we've talked about our essentials, utilities, food, um, the transportation. And a lot of times, we take the amount of those expenses for granted, you know? That's just what BPL charges for electricity. Not much you could do about it. But what we need to do is, is try to train even those essentials. See how we could reduce our electricity bill by doing things like, you know, changing to LED bulbs, being consistent in the maintenance in our cars, you know, unplugging appliances at the end of the day, turning off water heaters when you leave the house, that kind of thing. And even with our debt, we could ask about lower interest rates. The worst they could do is say no. Um, and ask about discount on rent, et cetera. Right? Um, provision was made earlier in the pandemic, but we're coming out of that now. So, you know, maybe have a discussion with your landlord if that is, is really necessary, if you were in that position. Now, I want to spend a minute on food, because that's one of the most powerful defense mechanisms we have when we talk about protecting and preserving. Right? And a lot of times, we say, well, it's too expensive to eat healthy. Um, but I would say it's, it's too expensive not to eat healthy, because food is what impacts your health, and at the end of the day, that's going to impact your finances. So we need to look at things like, you know, are we overeating? Um, if you live in the Bahamas today, chances are that you are overeating. Right? Um, and we know that because if we look at the obesity rate in the Bahamas, it's, um, I understand around sixty-nine percent. Um, in any event, very high. Then we know that Bahamians have some challenges, right? So what we could look at doing is try reducing portion sizes. Um, a lot of times, we, you know, you know, as we, as we grow older, we, we need fewer calories. But a lot of the times, we eat as if, as we did when we were younger, when we were going to the gym every day, or playing basketball, or softball every weekend. We're still eating like, um, you know, teenagers when we're far from that. So consider reducing portion sizes. Um, last week, we had a very good presentation on, um, high blood pressure. And one of the recommendations the doctor made in dealing with high blood pressure was to lose weight. And his recommendation was to try fasting once a week. His thing was cut out dinner on Wednesdays, that intermittent fasting is where that would amount to. Or you could try fasting one day a week, or you could move to two meals a day. Most people would do fine on two meals a day. Those without any medical conditions requiring otherwise. Right? And we all know that plant-based lifestyle is the, is the best way to go, the most healthy way to go. Um, but a lot of people say, oh, those veggie things are so expensive. But you don't have to eat those veggie things in order to go plant-based, right? Beans are one of the most nutritious sources of protein. They're delicious, simple to prepare. So a meal of brown rice and black beans with coleslaw and plantain, or with jerk chickpeas, delicious and satisfying. So consider making those kinds of changes. Now, I know we have children at home this summer, and they're going to eat a lot. And if you have a teenage boy, especially one that's an athlete, all bets are off. All your money's going on food. But we can deal with them. There's, there's a way to deal with that. Provide the healthy snacks, fruits, you know, your vegetables with hummus dip. Most children will eat that. Um, for those teenage boys, you get nuts. I know we say nuts are expensive, but you do what the food providers do. When they prepare trail mix, you mix the nuts with sunflower seeds and pumpkin seeds and raisins, and you have a reasonably priced, very healthy snack. Um, get them going with smoothies. You can pack a lot of nutrition and a lot of calories into smoothies that will keep them healthy and satisfied. Those drinks that, that kids like, and it is so hot, so they're in the fridge all day long. Um, we don't have to buy those drinks that are filled with high fructose corn syrup, you know, get some sorrel, two forty-five, um, a pack, and that'll give you a couple gallons that, you prepare that, don't load it with sugar, but most kids would like that as well. So the other point that you can do to save money on food is plan your meals for the week and shop based on what you're going to be preparing that week, so that you don't wind up with any wastage, right? You know, you cook soup and curry or something during the weekend, so you never get around to using the lettuce that goes bad. So plan, and then buy accordingly. And the final point on food, food security. Backyard farming. The Ministry of Agriculture has a very good program where they provide training, they even provide starter supplies to get you started with backyard farming. And, you know, if you were like me, when these lockdowns started, and, you know, food's still going to be open, or, you know, what could you get? Will all the food be there? You know, my first thought was, oh, you know, I wish I had planted those potatoes or tomatoes or something um, that we could be eating. And um, we still have the opportunity to get involved with backyard farming, more nutritious food, and it gives us a level of security. Okay, so I know someone's saying, but I have no income. You know, that's about buying food and saving on food and that kind of thing. But what happens if you have no income? Be sure to access every type of support that's available to you. There are unemployment benefits, and including for the self-employed, that can be obtained through national insurance. Um, there's rental assistance from social services. For food, there's a National Food Distribution Task Force, and you can register at rapidbahamas.com. And then for those persons with businesses, And then for those persons with businesses, there are small business grants and loans that you could access. To keep your business afloat during this time. So there's a lot of support available and a lot of it is available um through online application. And so if you're not comfortable um navigating the internet, uh get help. Lots of young people are around that can assist you with that, so. And the the other point is, um, you know, I I was talking to someone about uh the national insurance benefit. And their point was, oh, national insurance wants so much, you know, they wanna get in all your business. Don't let that deter you. Um, if if you're not working, you have some time. So there's some red tape, and I think in a lot of cases, um efforts have been made to cut the red tape. But do what's necessary to get yourself what you need to keep afloat at this time, okay? So, no income, we're gonna do whatever's necessary to keep us going. But how do we get past, get around that, uh get to a point where we have income? How do I find a job now? So what you should start off by doing is taking an inventory of all your skills. And don't limit yourself to your current function, okay? You're a high school teacher, don't just think of yourself as a teacher. You have a certain skill set, that could be training and development. Conflict resolution, motivational speaking, all of that teachers do in a day. And those skills can be applied in any environment, in a corporate environment, outside of a school environment. So think about your skills beyond your job description. So consider those other environments where you can use your skills, update your resume. And with all of those skills, consider who you know and let people know that you're looking for work. Because a lot of times jobs will be found through word of mouth. Uh, give a copy of your resume, you know, electronically, you can do hard copy too. To people that can vouch for you, so that when something arises. They have your resume and they can hand it over to the appropriate person and say. Here, take a look at this, this person has these skills. Also, we talked about investing in ourselves during this period. So look for opportunities to uh upgrade your skills in the short term. And look for ways to stand out from the crowd, right? There, you know, there's a lot of free training. Available online, things like language training, um. Food handler certificates that certain jobs would require, if you have it, um when they're looking, then that puts you in a better position. And remember to register with the Ministry of Labor at jobseekers dot bahamas dot gov. So you have a job and maybe been living paycheck to paycheck and and looking to shore things up, not, there's some uncertainty. About what's going to happen. To start with, be the best at your job, be the one that the employer would hate to let go. Now, in these times, it it may not matter how good you are, because if the company goes under, everybody goes. But you wanna be the person that the employer doesn't want to let go, if if there are options there. Or the person that they can recommend us to another potential employer, so be the best that you can be. And then have a backup plan, what would you do if you or your spouse loses your job? What if both of you were to lose your job at the same time? Have a backup budget, identify the expenses that you could eliminate or reduce right away, right? Take advantage of those training opportunities, upgrade your skill set. And then finally, consider a side hustle, right? Time for a side hustle, so what's a side hustle? It's something that you do in addition to your full-time job. That supplements your income or you to diversify your income, we talked about. Uh, diversifying when we invest, you can also diversify your income streams. So, when you're looking for a side hustle, start by identifying needs that were recently created, but that aren't being met fully. So look at all of the delivery services that were created during lockdown. Or the mask wearing, or the the mask making, or um hand sanitizer. Sales, right? Consider the skills and talents you have. And sometimes we might think, you know, I don't have any, you know, particular skill or talent, but think about things that people compliment you on. It's likely that someone would be willing to pay you for that, and it doesn't have to be anything big. It could be as simple as, you know, do you make a good soup or good cookies or cheesecake or cupcakes? You can tell where my bias is, but but look at what your skills, what what things that people might pay you to do for them. And look at what assets you have, do you have some fruit trees in your yard, do you know a lot of people, um, do you have a lot of students? And think about how these assets could be used to make money. So, most popular side hustles, food, and it doesn't have to be catering. Um, I don't know what it is about lockdowns and cheesecake, but I I've been seeing a lot of ads for people selling cheesecake. And it leads me to believe that someone's buying them, so it, you know, potato bread. Um, could be, you know, scallop salad, you know, the veggie food. Um, that uh some people don't know how to make, but they wanna eat. Um, delivery service, you you know, running errands, you know, you might be a taxi driver and most of your clients would have been tourists. But, you know, they're not here now, you may have one or two local clients. Why not reach out to them and see how they're doing and see if there's anything else that you could do for them, you know, and and build on that? Anything beauty related will sell in the Bahamas. So, you know, are you good at braiding hair? Um, you know, natural hair, a lot of people are moving to natural hair now. Um, you know, a lot of these products that here and skincare products. A lot of these can be made through simple ingredient, aloes, uh if you walk through a a beauty supply store, you know, it's like. Going through um a grocery store, you know, everything is coconut oil and mango and thyme and rosemary and. Just aloes, of course. So a lot of food products go into beauty products, so you know, look on the internet if you have that interest. A lot of these two or three ingredients, then you can make something. Um, the health products, natural products, you know, do you have sour soft tree and um moranga? You know, these bush medicine that people are into now and herbal teas, look at the potential, um, look at what you have that could. Could help you in making products like that. Now, unfortunately, recently, there've been a lot of two um teachers. That have, that are facing layoffs or reduced income. And the obvious uh option for them is to tutor, you know, there are a lot of children preparing for exams. And apart from that, um, you know, the last school year ended in such a turbulent way. Um, maybe there's a need for students to kind of prepare for the coming semester. You know, catch up on what they may not have mi- um, what they may have missed during the last semester. So, you know, canvas people that you may not wanna approach your students, but canvas people with kids or other students that you know. Or young people, website design. Uh, creating and maintaining a social media presence for an entrepreneur who might not have that skill. These are things that you can offer, upcycling, you know, the trash to treasure trend. You know, you may buy something, uh you know, a chair inexpensively or a desk inexpensively, and you, you know. Um, revamp it. Paint, uh whatever, um personalize it a bit or customize it for someone. And you can make a lot of money from that, photography is another popular side hustle. And you can make a lot of money in that as well. Okay, so. We know that crises present business opportunities. When there's a new crisis, then it creates new needs. And that leads to businesses to meet those needs. So we know that in the US, previous downturns produced high-profile companies like Airbnb. Disney, General Motors, Hewlett Packard, Uber, even Microsoft. And we've seen that trend here, cuz new businesses have already sprung up out of this uh COVID pandemic. And there are a lot of resources locally to assist entrepreneurs. That would like to go into business now, so it's important to get to know what those resources are. And I'm gonna share a couple of them with you. So um, the biggest one that we talk about now is the Small Business Development Center or Access Accelerator. Um, the Bahamas Agriculture and Industrial Corporation. Bahamas Development Bank and the Venture Capital Fund. And we'll talk a little bit about each of those. So, this, the SBDC or Access Accelerator, as they're called now. Their goal is to help um micro, and that's very small businesses, you know, someone with an ale salon or. Um, you know, a small landscaping uh operation, micro, small, medium enterprises. And they provide training and advisory services to entrepreneurs, they'll provide assistance with obtaining funding. They also have a mentorship program that teams entrepreneurs up with successful business person. And their funding could be by way of grants, which you don't have to pay back, or loans. And they even have programs or funds set aside especially for young people. And people in certain areas, so the over the hill economic zone, uh people in Nabako and Grand Bahama. So this um institution provides a lot of support. And if you're looking to go into business, they provide initial training on what it would take to run a business. Um, and walk you through and. Provide a mentor to work with you um for a period of three years. So that's um, and the mentors are successful business people, so that's very valuable support. That if you're serious about going into business, you should look into. So we also have the Bahamas Agricultural and Industrial Corporation, BAIC. And their focus is on supporting small businesses and agriculture and light manufacturing. And they assist with training, preparation of business plans, sourcing, implementation and follow-up. So if you decide you wanna make uh you know, maybe a pepper sauce or juju jam or um knap jam. Whatever from local products, they can help you in learning how to prepare that product. They can help you to source the bottles to put your product in. Um, they run the farmer's market, so they can provide a marketplace for you to sell your product. So um BAIC, I think is a very valuable resource. They also provide training in in handicrafts, um straw work and shell work, you know, a lot of the um. Straw artisans that have popped up over the last ten years would have gone through BAIC. And a lot of the people that are selling the the condiments, pepper sauces, et cetera. Um, would have, would have gone through them as well. So follow them on social media, uh just to stay informed about when their training events are. Uh, so that i- if you wanna take advantage of that, you're able to do so, and then of course, you can also reach out to them outside of that, okay? Then we have the Bahamas Development Bank, and their focus tends to be on on larger. Industrial projects, tourism, fisheries, transportation, agriculture as well. And they provide loans, but they'll also provide equity, so they'll provide you with the capital, they'll go into the business with you. And then we have the Bahamas Entrepreneurial Venture Fund. And they finance new and and rapidly growing companies. They um. Will purchase. They'll go into business with you, and they'll assist in the development of new products or services. And the reason that um they'll go into business with you, they'll put up capital with you. Um, if your, your business looks to be like it's going to be successful and it's growing rapidly. And so they'll take the risk of putting up money, uh because they have the expectation that yours will be a higher reward. Okay? So those are some of the resources that are available to us. And now we we've come to the point where the economy is reopening, uh so what now? What do we do now? Protect and preserve, that's going to be our focus. Protect and preserve our financial resources, hang on to cash. We're going to protect our health. And when we come out of this, as we come out of this, don't spend what you save, right? You're gonna use that to pay down the debt, cuz you were holding on to cash once you come out of it. Um, now that the country's opened up and we can travel. And it's summer, and I know a lot of people would have been looking at that pilgrimage to Mecca, I mean Miami. Um, think twice. No unnecessary travel, it would be my recommendation. But if you must travel, uh remember, um Bahamas Air has two fly free. And you can travel to our COVID-free family island. And. This is your chance to discover the best beach in the Bahamas, right? Young people, we could, we should see if we could get that to trend on Twitter. Best beach in the Bahamas, but you have to be in the picture, I would start with Eluthrum. And I can hear Cat Island screaming, but um, okay, me, Crooked Island, okay? Exuma, Exuma, that's that's my boat, but those are the options. Uh, can seriously consider um travel opportunities within the country. Um, another word of advice, uh no point crying over spilled milk, right? You know, we may feel awful that, oh my goodness, this thing has started and it caught me without my rainy day fund. You know, it caught me with a pile of credit card debt, or you know, it caught me behind on this or that. No use crying over that, just determine never again, right? I'm never going to be found in this position again, there will be other crises, we can be certain of that. Uh, so once we come out of this, we'll follow those pre-COVID financial principles. And budget, save, set up that rainy day fund and invest, okay? So now we wanna get ready for when the economy turns around and the opportunities. That will present, be presented. And what I'd end with, what now? Through this, just remember. Philippians four, six through eight, be anxious for nothing, but in everything by prayer and supplication. With Thanksgiving, our gratitude journals, let your requests be made known to God. And the peace of God, which surpasses all understanding, will guard your hearts and minds through Christ Jesus. Thank you.
Okay, Catherine, thank you very much, uh very uh informative and comprehensive presentation. We do have a few questions, hold on one second, let me. I think um, the first question that that was asked. Um, had to do with uh any programs out there that um could provide assistance. To um small businesses or actually to small companies that wanted to start up. Now, you did, um, you did cover that in your presentation, but can you just briefly say again? Uh, more specifically about, um, let let me read the question for you. Do you know if the government gives small loans to per- persons who want or require funds? Or startup businesses like lawn maintenance? Can you just uh reiterate what you said in that area for us, please?
Okay, sure, and let me make two points, and absolutely. There, the Small Business Development Center, and in fact, um, you know, I was taking a look at some of the things that they have done. And lawn maintenance, there are quite a few lawn maintenance companies that got funding from them, and. You can obtain the funds if you're just starting up as well, it doesn't have to be an existing business. So, and it can be loans, they have loans and they also have grants. There are special programs for young people as well. So um, if you're a young person, you know, that's an additional opportunity. So definitely check with the Small Business Development Center, they're just off um Gladstone Road. But of course, they're online, so the easiest thing, go online, um you can uh do certain applications online. Um, the other point I wanted to make, um, is that there is a government program for small businesses. That um, that might be experiencing hardship as a result of this COVID pandemic. And um, there is a a loan and grant program. And um, there is a, a loan and grant program. So that's available to small businesses. You have to make certain commitments about, um, you know, not, not releasing a certain number of staff and, and that kind of thing. The details you can find on the Small Business Development Center's website. Um, so yeah, there is help for existing businesses and opportunity for startups. Um, and lawn maintenance, um, those, I, I have seen, um, where those, um, businesses have gotten support.
Okay, thank you. Next question. For people who have received a redundancy payment, what are the top five things that you would recommend they do with the funds?
Um, I say the top one, right? We're, we're looking to protect and preserve. So sock it away if you can, right? To the extent that you can put that away. Um, just to see, unless you see a particular, you know, business opportunity that, that you feel strongly about. Um, I would say, you know, hold on to it until you, until you, um, until we've gotten through this and you can, you can, you can see, um, your way clear as to what's happening. Um, and then, and there will be opportunities coming out of this. That's the important thing. Um, you know, at two, two sides to every coin. So, um, there'll be opportunities to, to buy property, invest in businesses, et cetera, um, as we come out of this. So if you can hold on to some funds, if you have funds available when those opportunities arise, then you'd be in a position to take advantage of it.
Okay, so our next question. Um, with the dearth in job opportunities and the fenced retiree not in a secure financial standing, how does this borderline retiree with reduced salary, meager skillset, health risks and, and bleak prospects for a livable pension? How does one cope in this crisis?
Okay. All right, um. I'll, I'll, I'll repeat what I said about skillset. Sometimes we think we don't have, um, any skills. But carefully consider that, you know. Think about, you know, what's growing in your yard. Think about the people that you know. Um, think about whatever resources you might have available to you. Um, if, if you have health challenges, and one of the things I forgot to mention in terms of things that are available to you. Um, for, for people with, you know, um, chronic conditions, the medicine prescription, the prescri- government's prescription plan that provides you with, that will provide for your prescription. Um, N H I. So those are things, um, you should be taking advantage of, um, at this time as well. Um, for, for this person, you know, I would say evaluate whether, whether you really do have skills, right? Look for what skills you might have and see who you might be able to team up with. If you have, you know, some health risk, you don't want to be running around, um, like delivering groceries for people. You, you don't want to be doing that side of it. You know, but maybe you can make really good potato bread. And you have a niece or nephew who's willing to make some deliveries for you. You know, you know, some people that you used to work with that really like your macaroni and cheese or look at those things, um. You know, that niece or nephew is a resource. You know, they can prepare the flyers for whatever it is, you know, the, the muffins or cassava bread or whatever, benny cake, whatever you make. Um, and they can get the word out for you, right? So that's, that's another resource for you. Evaluate all of your resources.
All right, and, and it looks like the last question we have right now may stem from the earlier question in connection with the redundant redundancy payment.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the question is, should the money be put in the bank on fixed deposit or should you invest it in shares, et cetera? What are the best options?
Okay, that, that redundancy. Okay, depends on, um, where you are in life. Um, if you're, and this isn't a retire, is this a retiree?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right. So if you're a retire, a retiree, it might be best to put that money in the bank or shorter-term investment, uh, like maybe a, you know, shorter-term government securities, treasury bills and notes that might pay more than, than the bank, the typical bank would. Um, so there's some security in that and you know, you, less chance of losing it if you put it in, in, if you want to invest in shares, um. You know, that would be for a person with a longer time horizon. You know, they, they don't expect to, to need the fund, you know, within a couple of years. Uh, because especially in the Bahamas, you know, when people tend to invest in, in shares and holds. So you may not always be able to sell when you want to. And, you know, if you, and you might wind up having to sell at a loss if you really need the funds and people aren't, you know, willing to pay your price. So depending on where you are, um, and then look at, at, at what bank you're going to put the funds in. Uh, so most of the banks aren't paying much interest now. Um, some of the credit unions are paying more. Um, and they're, they're, um, guaranteed by our deposit insurance corporation. And I can't remember offhand what the amount of the guarantee is. Um, is it sixty thousand? Maybe fifty thousand? Um, so you don't want to put more than that in any one institution. But look at the, look at the credit unions for a high, if, you know, if you, you need to have your funds in cash or you have a shorter time horizon, you're a retiree or something. You know, look at the credit unions, um, look at shorter-term government securities. Um, central bank could provide you information on that. Um, they usually advertise whenever there's an offering. Um, and then, um, you know, you, you keep some in, you know, some in, you know, inaccessible, um, bank account. If you have a longer term horizon, then invest in, um, in, you know, the stocks and shares and the port had an offering, uh, recently that people were very enthusiastic about. So, um, yeah, those, those are some of the options, but it just depends on where you are at, right? If you have to pay for tuition coming up, you know, within the next couple of years, consider that, that as well.
Okay, thank you. I think that that's the end of, of the questions that have been sent in.
There's Val.
Sorry?
Yeah, there's one question that was in the posted. Um, it says, how can I save when I only have a little?
Okay, yes.
Just, just get started. The, that's the important thing. You know, we always hear, you know, it, it doesn't matter, matter how much you make, but it's what you do with it that matters. And once you get in the habit of saving, um, the funds will build up, right? Your interest will start to earn interest and you'd be surprised to see how that builds up. In, in, in the pre-COVID presentation, I have a slide that shows you, uh, you know, how to become a millionaire. And if you're young and, um, just getting started, you know, there's, you, you can put it, put aside a reasonable amount every month, you know, for the next, you know, thirty years or so, and, and you can come up at the end of the day with, with a lot of money. So the idea is it doesn't, doesn't matter how much you're making now. Be sure to save some of it. And, and it will grow. Get into the habit of saving. That's, that's the important principle.
Okay, all right. Well, that, that is the final question. So I'll turn it back over to Brother Soli now.
Okay, um, yes, I think Latord will now come with, with the promotion of, um, various features and then we have Sister Abigail.
Thank you, um, Brother Ella Sully. Um, I just want to remind persons to please, especially our visitors, please register with your name, your telephone number and your email address so that we can get special prizes to you. And we're encouraging you to be, uh, among the, um, first seven person in particular, um, that will get special prizes. Um, we, I have, so far we have about two guests and I know there are more and I know there are some on Facebook. So we're waiting for those persons to come in, uh, with your phone number and your email address along with your name, so we can get those special gifts to you. Tonight, um, you know, we're talking about our financial platform. Um, we want to let you know that next week we will be starting out with our women's issue. And that's going to be very informative. So I'm encouraging everybody to make certain that you be a part of these town hall meetings as you get ready for that. Um, also, I want to remind you that coming up, coming up is, uh, on the twenty fifth of July, we will start, um, with our very own Dr. Paul Scavella, who's a life coach and evangelist. And he will be starting out from the book of Genesis, The Path to Life in the Box. In the box is the big issue these days. So we want to get ready for that and be ready for, to live, be able to live in the box. Um, lessons for COVID nineteen existed. So those are some of the things I want to highlight. And tonight our program is sponsored by Grow Life Supplies Bahamas. And they are offering a very special fifty dollar gift card, consultancy gift card tonight um, to the seventh person that registers. Whoever that seventh person is will receive that gift card and we'll send it to your email address. Um, okay, so please, let's, let's, uh, make certain we register, especially our guests. Um, so that we can have all that information, um, to you and you can receive your guests. I also want to remind you that if you want to reach out to us, please contact us at P T L M at coralwave.com. That's P T L at coralwave.com or call us at four two two five eight, so that we could stay connected and we can help you with some, some programs that you may have. So those are the highlights that we want to make certain that we make sure our guests in particular are aware of what we're doing tonight. All right. Thank you very much, Brother Soli.
Okay. Good evening. I am Abigail Clark. I hope that the information provided here this evening is helpful and relevant to your personal needs. You know, prayer enlarges the heart until it is capable of containing God's gift of himself. If you have a burden, a pressing health or spiritual matter and would like prayerful support, our prayer lines are available to you at this time. Feel free to connect with our WhatsApp prayer numbers at four two five eleven ninety one, four two four thirty seven ninety, eight zero nine zero five seven six, six seven seven five seven one zero six eight nine four three seven five. And that's it. We don't want you to carry this burden alone. In fact, we want you to use these numbers. So please don't hesitate to contact them. We are here for you. Thank you and good night.
Okay, just want to remind, um, everybody again that next week we talk about, um, the praise syndrome. And that'll be led out by Sister Joan Scavella. So we're looking forward to that, um, next week with, as we deal with women's issues. So we want to make certain that everybody, um, is all prepared for that. And as I indicated, please make certain you get ready for, um, Pastor Paul on the twenty fifth of July, where we're beginning. It's going to be dynamite. It's going to be exciting. So I want to get everybody ready for that. Um, so let's get ready and Zoom is the way to go. Thank you so much.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Let us bow for prayer, bow our heads for prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we'd like to thank you once again for facilitating this opportunity for us to gather together where we're able to impart one to another information. Also, we ask that you continue to guide us and navigate us through this pandemic of COVID nineteen. Dear God, and help us to use the information that was presented by Sister Gibson wisely and to our advantage. And at the end of the day, put you first in every decision that we make, financial or otherwise. This is my prayer. In Jesus's name, I pray, amen.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I'd just like to thank the Georgia team as we get ready to, as we close. And right now I'll turn it over to Pastor for any further comments.
Thank you, team, for this exciting program this evening. Want to remind you that if you would like to make contact with us and you went to one of the, uh, seven guests, P T L M at Coral Wave, you have prayer requests, um, or any other matters that you'd like us to help you with, please email us at P T L M at coralwave.com. Again, thank you and God bless and have a blessed rest of the week. Look forward to seeing you next week Wednesday at seven o'clock as we share in this. I want to invite our special guest to please in return and tell somebody and join us. God bless. Have a good evening.